This time I will call on Councilmember Roberts. It would leave the certification followed by a blade of weight.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the role of the establishment?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, here. A form is established. There are votes to wait for you to have approved the minutes of the day until we first move.
So moved.
So moved.
Will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, yes, those minutes are approved. But folks, other than the addition of a special presentation to be delivered by Ms. Smith, are there any other additions or deletions to be made? Oh, oh, correct. I'm sorry. We will be moving, um... Item... Yes, sorry. Uh, removing item G from the consent agenda and will take up as a standalone motion, uh, after the consent agenda. Is there a second? Will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, yes, the agenda is adopted. This time we have a, uh, special presentation by Councilmember Smith. Ms. Smith, I will go ahead and turn it over to you.
Good evening. Um, we have a special... Good evening.
Good evening.
He said, "I don't think they heard you." Uh, we have a special presentation and as a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I am extremely excited to acknowledge, um, our NPHT group unity week that will be, I believe, next week, June 9th through the 15th. So if you are part of NPHT, please stand. Whereas the National Panalimic Council was founded on May 10th, 1930, to foster cooperative actions of its members in dealing with matters of mutual concern, and whereas NPHT promotes interaction through forums, meetings, and other mediums for the exchange of information and engages in cooperative programming and initiatives through various activities and functions, and whereas Calver County National Panalimic Council, affectionately known as Divine Nine, is composed of the following member organizations: Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Alpha Pappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, Theta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, and Iota Phi Tau Fraternity Incorporated. And whereas each of the nine NPHT organizations evolved during the period when African Americans were being denied essential rights and privileges afforded others, and now therefore the City Council of the City of Aniston hereby join the Calver County NPHT as they come together for the Great Unity Week, June 9th through the 15th, 2024, to focus on community awareness and action through educational, economic, and cultural service activities to recreate positive change for the community dated this, this fourth day of June, 2024. Thank you all.
Hey, everybody. Focus this far right here. Yeah, there we go. We kind of dabbing and wiling out. Kristen's gonna take our first set of shots and then Bill will take our next set, so we'll look right here. Three, two, one. More. But Bill, you got it from here. One, two, three. He needs to smile.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Um, sadly, he can't be educated by the baked up information and he encourage you to, as we do, to live in your cell.
Thank y'all. Mr. folks, do we have any unfinished business?
You go first.
All right, let's move on then to the consent agenda. I will move to the adopted consent agenda. The removal of item G, which will be taken as a standalone motion next. Is there a second? Second. Will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, yes. Okay, so our, our motion tonight will be, this is an appointment to the healthcare authority in accordance with, uh, the ordinance on the healthcare authority. The healthcare authority actually submits a slate of names. And so, uh, three names were submitted. We'll take the first name first. So this would be a motion to appoint, uh, Deborah Foster to the healthcare authority place number eight, where the term to expire, May 31st, 2029. Is there a motion for passage to adoption?
So moved. Second.
Second. Counsel discussion. Will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, yes. So Deborah Foster, uh, has the appointment to the healthcare authority. She has secured all five votes, uh, of the asked city council, they need to consider the others. Okay, next we have our only ordinance tonight, which is the zoning ordinance. Uh, we took it up on its first reading at our last meeting in May. Uh, at that meeting, we read by title only. So again, this is the zoning ordinance. I will... Is there a motion to read by title?
So moved. Second.
Uh, I will now call for a public hearing on the issue of reading the ordinance by title only. Is anyone which we heard asked to that issue? If there are here to be done, I will close that public hearing and ask, uh, the clerk to call the role on the vote on the issue of reading the ordinance by title.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes. So, uh, again, this is, uh, an ordinance to provide establishment districts within the corporate limits of the city of Aniston, Alabama, to regulate within such districts the use of real property contained there, including the height, number of stories, and size of buildings, and other structures, the percentage of life that may be occupied, the size of yards, and other open spaces, the density of population, and the use of buildings, structures, and land, to provide benefits of administration to ordinance. Uh, this ordinance, the penalties for the violation thereof. Okay, so once again, we'll get to some before, uh, by virtue, uh, uh, tonight, we will discuss, and then in the council discussion, uh, period amendments would like to be offered and voted on. So is there a motion for passage to adoption?
So moved.
Is there a second? So, council discussion to include the offering of amendments. And let me say this, you know, this, this is a reading document and, and can be amended. There is a process for it to be amended. Uh, but again, we're taking up the ordinance as a whole tonight. Is there... Do you have an amendment?
Yes, I do. Um, my amendment is as follows. No alternative financial institution, medical cannabis dispensary, tattoo parlor, tattoo studio, tobacco vocation, or bar carriage should be permitted within 500 feet of any dwelling tonight as per 2.03, 4.55, place of worship, school, or public park. And my, my issue, um, with the zoning ordinance is that, um, many people who have invested in downtown, I mean, a number of my leaky buildings, true, but people who invest in downtown businesses or whatever, they did so in good faith under certain regulations for zoning. And in my opinion, to go back and really change the zoning ordinance radically is, um, not, not even, not consistent to met with the good faith that these people has, have put in in spending money downtown. That's my issue with it. And I'm speaking, I have my constituents. None, a lot of this is not personal. It's about, is my constituents. So I represent, they, I fully understand that. Bye.
All right, is there a second?
Can I ask for a point of clear...
Sure.
You referenced that within 500 feet of living. You didn't represent any specific area, although in your commentary there you referenced the core. Is this amendment restricted to the core or is it universal?
It should be universal because if the medical cannabis dispensary, which we mentioned, should be in the area of the medical facility, um, that would, to me, that would, there should not be used children, like I mean, you were near that. That's, that's my thing. Now, you can change it and run it forward as, as mine, um, or a put for this purpose. For your part, Council, I'm...
Is there a second? I, I'll second that to get that on the floor for further discussion. So, Mr. you...
I just offer, uh, a couple things. One, uh, I understand the logic. If you say that a dispensary needs to be located within the area of medical facility, there are residents all around our hospital that were within 500 feet of our hospital, that we're gonna locate a dispensary there too, or there within that too. I don't disagree that, that the dispensary should not be located within 500 feet of a residence. I, I totally support that. Uh, the other point that I made in the work session is that I don't believe that should apply to the core district. Uh, and the logic there is, uh, folks that choose to live in the core district, choose to live in a commercial zone. They made that decision consciously. They made it with forethought that they're not living downtown because they can't afford to live in a residence. Often that downtown place is as expensive as something in the suburban neighborhood. It's one thing to want certain protections as a resident in a neighborhood from noise, from activity and things like that, but if you're living in a law department downtown, you chose that. I lived in a law department downtown Denver for years. Uh, my son lives in a law department in downtown Aniston. Uh, those were conscious decisions that were made. There were options to live in neighborhoods, uh, where you are afforded privacy and quiet and things like that. Downtown is not that. Downtown is a commercial zone. It, a nightlife, a bar shouldn't have to shut down their music because you're ready to go to bed at 10:30. If you didn't wanna, if you don't wanna listen to the bar's music at 10:30, why didn't you move downtown? Uh, so the, those are some, some concerns that I have with that. Uh, I don't disagree that the dispensary component should not be in the core. I don't disagree that the alternative financial institution should not be in the core. Uh, I, I agree with those statements. The other pieces of it, I feel like need to be regulated by the exterior appearance and not, as long as there's nothing illegal or immoral going on inside the facility, as long as the street front is kept up and looks good, I have a hard time denying somebody the right to open a business in our downtown core that is consistent with, uh, the millennial age. You know, I, I speak a little bit probably directly, more directly to the tattoo parlor or studio. A lot of the difference there is pretty narrow and all of that, but, yeah, I, I don't have any tattoos. Um, I don't have any desire to have any tattoos, but I have a daughter that has a tattoo and I have a son that wants a tattoo. And they're of that age and their generation lives and breathes that. And there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, it's not a negative. There's not like, there're bad people hanging out in front of it. It's not like the neighborhood becomes trashed because a tattoo parlor shows up there. It's, it's a pretty mainstream component of our society today and...
Okay, Mr. you, if you could, if you could quickly read that a little bit more clearly. Why don't you have an amendment to be here, sir?
I would, I would say, no, I don't have an amendment because I think it's too broad. I can't even support it.
Okay. Any, any additional discussion on Harris? Hearing now, the clerk please call the role on Harris. I mean, I, I agree. I, I think that's too broad, too wide. Uh... Will the clerk please call the role on Harris, sir?
Councilmember Jenkins?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
No. Okay, I, I, are there any other amendments? Okay, I, I have two amendments which were discussed in the work session. The first one relates to section 7.1502, subpart B. The, uh, the proposal as presented to the council reads, "Tattoo studios are not permitted on properties or furniture on Noble Street." My amendment would be that, um, section B should read, "Tattoo studios nor tattoo parlors are permitted on property for the front yard of Noble Street in the core district." Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion.
Core, upon...
Yeah, the core, upon the core district of Noble Street, which restricts it from the 9th to 13th on Noble Street. So... Any additional discussion? Will the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
All right, yes, that amendment passes. And then I have one other amendment, and this would actually amend, uh, article four, uh, residential section. And this amendment would read, uh, it's a staff recommendation, that, that this amendment, it would read, "approved materials for residential fences. One, residential aluminum fences. Two, residential chain link fences, vanquished tube slats, excluding barbed wire or razor wire. Three, residential vinyl fences. Four, residential wood fences with dog ear or scallop frames, excluding pallet fences. Five, residential ornamental steel fences. Six, welded wire with top bough and side frames to keep the barn rigid with chicken wire. Seven, masonry. The owner or applicant agrees to the requirements and locations listed in the city man's zoning ordinance and agrees to install and replace fences or wall on property listed on the permit application currently. The owner or applicant signifies that the permit concerns the zoning requirements for this property and does not exempt the owner or applicant from any liability concerning construction or placement of said fence or wall. It is strictly the owner's and owner applicant's responsibility to ensure that said fence or walls located on property listed on the permit and is installed properly. Upon installation of any fence or wall which creates a blind side component as determined by the city engineer and/or his or her designated staff must be reconfigured or reconstructed in compliance with the recommendation of the engineer or his or her designated staff, that's a new amount. No fence located in the front yard of residential structure shall be over 36 inches in height. The support post and decorative, decorative features may be at 4 feet. The side wing back of the front porch of residential structure to the rear yard shall be no taller than 8 feet. The support post and decorative features may be up to 9 feet high. Is there a second? That amendment fails for lack of a second. Are there any other amendments?
I would like to propose an amendment that, uh, restricts medical marijuana dispensaries and, uh, alternative financial lending institutions from the core district.
The core district as a total and not just as a whole property? Okay, so the Jenkins amendment is, as he just stated, I give the core district only. I will second that, uh, council discussion. Hearing now, the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, that Jenkins amendment passes. Are there any other amendments offered tonight? Because again, we're playing a third game on the ordinance as a whole. Okay, see, no other discussion. Again, that will be with the inclusion of the Jenkins amendment that just passed and my amendment regarding, uh, studios and parlors, uh, on Noble in the core, oh, oh, any, any additional discussion? Hearing now, the clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
I'm beside... Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Mayor Draper?
Yes. Okay, so the zoning amendment passes. But folks, are there any additional or other matters that may come before council?
Go first.
Uh, we have the public comment schedule for tonight. Uh, council comments, Mr. Jenkins and so on, please.
I know that you guys have not heard a lot of discussion regarding this zoning ordinance provided this body with the exception of this evening. Uh, but please don't take that as any, any indication that each one of us hasn't spent a significant amount of time for it through the document, uh, attending funding commission meetings, learning about it, listening to the public, and trying to come to the best solution for our community as a whole. It's a very important, uh, piece of, uh, legislation that we have to work from. It is a living and breathing document. I fully expect that there are pieces that have slipped through the cracks that will reveal themselves once this, uh, document is implemented. And we all do have the opportunity through a very specific process to amend that and to account for those glitches that may or may not be there. We've made every effort to get it to the best interest of the vast majority of our community. There are certainly gonna be some people that are unhappy with the decisions of this body. Uh, there always are on these difficult, uh, pieces of legislation. And, uh, you know, I, I'm happy to discuss with anyone and everyone my thoughts on why I made the decisions I made and where I'm coming from and all of that. Uh, I appreciate, uh, our Divine Nine and all of you being here this evening, uh, and taking your time to be a part of this and for the service, more importantly, for the service that you give back here to you. Thank you very much. You have my full support. Uh, for the rest of you that are here tonight, thank you for taking time out of your day to be here. Thank the staff for all your hard work. Good night.
Anyway, first of all, I'd say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Always blessed to be here. I come out, I sit on the floor, I give a round of applause. Um, the council, what we've been working on, we, you know, this is, this is one of the zoning ordinance is one of the things that really could have split, split us in half or could have fractured the council. Um, the zoning ordinance, a lot of, a lot of work put into it, I was on the bank commission, watching, considering some of the work that was done, implemented more. What we're trying to do is look best for the city with people. That being said, we love everybody. But to the panel, I would still appreciate everybody coming out. Um, in celebration of this coming week, you know, that week, it'll be financed by, by our annual panel cookout, which will be Saturday, Wednesday, Thursday, April, September, October. Take a chance on that. Yeah, I'm starting out there. Also, an update from last, last week, uh, I was told to specifically remind the council that it's coming Saturday, you know, 8th, the brothers, the Peta Talk, the Baker's Side, my chapter, trying to cooperate. I said it all out loud. It will be, it will be beating the Noelwood, well, it has Noelwood, by, by Noelwood, you all, you all, you all come once. It'll be from 11 to 1, if I heard, 11 to 1. You get a chance to come out. Um, the brothers told me to remind the city that we showed up last week, now we gotta show up and get 24 more. To the city staff, thank y'all for everything you do. Um, police chief, you're just out, hats on, all you guys. It's about to get hot. Things have already picked up. See y'all, please be a friend for all of our, all of our partners, everybody, everybody, for both, to you and your direct staff. Thank you for everything you've done and you do. We really appreciate it. It makes it easy to sit on the council. Live, y'all. Good night, and let me out, me out, everybody.
I wanna thank NPHT for coming on today. Uh, like Councilman Roberts says, I love to see a packed and busy council meeting. I see my classmates tonight of Foster. We graduated at Aniston High School in 2017. We have our big alumni event coming up this month, which I'm extremely excited about. We're hoping to have, um, some good heavy police, um, enforcement and involvement in that area as well because we want to have some safe run. Um, I actually want to acknowledge the voter impact workshop that the Calver County NPHT is hosting on June 11th, uh, 2024. It will be hosted at Harbor Community Center, um, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. This past session, um, in Alabama Legislature was, um, it was a heavy one. Um, HB 100 passed and it's added some convictions, convictions to our moral turp-, uh, to Moral Turpitude Act. And I want to ensure, this actually goes into effect on October, right before the presidential election. So I want to make sure that we can get as many people out as possible to make sure that they're registered to vote. Um, and even if they're not able to vote in this presidential election, that we're getting them ready for our municipal elections that are next year. So I wanna make sure we're showing an immense amount of support for that particular event. Uh, another thing, you know, we make decisions every single day, but one thing I want to say that I'm extremely proud of within this council is there have been plenty of votes where we have all not agreed on, uh, ordinances that have passed, you know, that we may have not all agreed on, but we have an immense amount of respect for one another. Um, that's what's so important about leadership is when you get a group of people together from different backgrounds and different perspectives that are willing to come here and vote on matters that are, that are what's, um, for what's best for the majority of this city. Um, we can't pick and choose. It's not based on a particular neighborhood or a particular side of Aniston, or who has the money and who does not. We don't vote based on that. We vote based on what's right for the majority. And so I'm extremely grateful for the leadership that this city... And so I'm extremely grateful for the leadership that this city council has showed. And not only that, to take, um, you know, some of what Councilman Jenkins has said, this is a living, breathing document. Issues reveal themselves. That's the whole point of enacting legislation. You know, when issues arise, we're able to create policy. That's the point of creating policy. So, um, I, I just wanted to make sure that I said that to you all because time and time again, the respect that we show each other here, regardless of our differences, that's what true leadership is. And I hope we can continue that path on for councils to come. Uh, thank you all for coming this evening. I hope you all have a safe departure. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you, Divine Nine. You are divine. I appreciate all that you do. You all witnessed the, a form of democracy alive. Only if Congress could behave the way we do on local level. But local level is the purest form of democracy you will find. And you saw, I voted differently than my publicists. That does not mean that, that, that we're gonna walk away and be angry. No, not at all. I represent my constituents. The majority of the five pounds I got were against the zoning ordinance. I represented them. This is not my personal opinion. So I hope you all understand that. We are the best publicists in the whole world, and gee, I wish, like I said, I wish Congress could follow suit. Thank y'all.
I too want to thank members of the NPHT. Thank you for all you do for our community. It was really cool to get to honor y'all tonight in this way. So just keep it up. Thank, thank you all for all that you do. I do want to echo, uh, the numerous comments asked in the zoning ordinance. Uh, I know because, you know, speaking with my colleagues about this ordinance, this has been researched and vetted every which way to Sunday. And I appreciate everyone's, uh, due diligence in going over this document. I'll note that we've had multiple public presentations of this document, multiple public hearings of this document, with more than ample opportunity for, for people to come in, voice their opinions as to the document. Uh, staff did a great job. Uh, went through the, the planning commission. I appreciate the work of the planning commission. This is, this has been worked on for almost a year, I think. It's, the lower year. Yes, sir. So again, thanks to, thanks to all involved. And as was discussed, again, this is, uh, truly a living, breathing document that can be amended. Uh, as, uh, noted earlier, there's a specific process about which it can't be amended, but, but it can be amended. And, and if it needs to be amended, if it needs to look at being amended, uh, then we will do so. And we will do so in the same manner that we did, uh, this evening. With that, I will move that we stand in adjournment. Is there a second?
Seven.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?